This is a call out to the other one of them.
At this time, I would like to call this meeting the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners and towards our first board of business, as always have been our pledge of allegiance and our invitation, all commissioners are present at this time, so if you would please, if you would only pledge.
I pay the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
It's your prayer. Precious Father, we give thank you for everyone who is here with us tonight. We thank you, dear Lord, for the many blessings that you have bestowed on those here, but on our county and on our country. We know, dear Lord, we are not only a strong county, but we're a strong country, and we pray that we will continue to work and have you be part of our lives so that we can continue to make this a great country and a great county. Thank you again for your blessings, thank you for each one here, and we pray, dear Father, that you will always be with your grace. Christ name is the great. At this time, if any effective officials here, if you would please stand and be recognized, effective officials. Is there anyone at this time who would ask all veterans that they would please stand and be recognized? Want to keep us together as our staff, if you would please stand and be recognized. And let alone, we have an agenda that is for you, commissioners, at this time, with any additions of commissioners to the agenda. On my part, I would like to add one, and that would be, let's say, let's make that item fifteen. All of you should have received a letter from Floyd Bailey, who is the chairman of the board of trustees at Cleveland Community College, they're asking for a reappointment of a member on that board who is fulfilling the uninspired term of Bobby Rawl, and this time, we were going to extend a appointment to Craig Melton. He is an outstanding young man, and I'm going to get to that one, ask some, well, have a conversation about that, if we could add that to our bid today. Now, may I have a vote to approve the agenda, but to do any other additions or additions?
Question.
About Chair, second, for Mr. Holbrook, any discussion? Here none, on favor, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. It disappeared. Next agenda is our citizens' recognition, I'll wait over that one anyway.
I had no one sign it, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, if any of you wish to speak to commissioners at this time, if you fail to sign up, you may come up to clerk and do so. Anyone who wishes to speak for or against anything, or anything about the county, would like to come up and register your name with the clerk, we'd be glad to do. Here none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. First time I've ever done this, so you just bear with me one minute. Commissioner's item A is going to be our minutes from our April sixteenth meeting. We need to have any corrections or additions to those minutes at this time? Here none, we'll move on to item D, which is a budget amendment in the D-911 phone system. Item B is a budget amendment in the E-911 phone system to vote $204,430 in emergency telephone reserve fund for the purchase of an integrated voice-over internet protocol E-911 telephone platform. I'm going to stop right there, I don't think that's what they call it, VIP, voice in it. And that platform will be installed to work in conjunction with the current 911 database and CAD system. Price includes installation and training. These funds are restricted for use involving only E-911 communication. Item C is a budget amendment in the emergency management to accept $56,250 in federal grant funding, and an appropriate 25% local match, and we'll provide $75,000 for the procurement of regional hazard mitigation plan that will be acceptable to FEMA and the North Carolina Division of Emergency Management. Both Gaston and Leaven County will also participate in this plan, as I understand it, our match will be $18,750. Item D is a budget amendment in social services to select services to appropriate $52,633 in social services summing for five-year capitalization IBM computer hardware and software to be used in administration of social services program. I understand this is already budgeted, it's leased to purchase, and it's already in the budget. Item E is a budget amendment in the sheriff's office to accept $982 in donation to be budgeted for the use of the sheriff's K-9 program. Item L is a budget amendment in the landfill to accept $212 in donation to the county's solid waste program to be used for the proper disposal of hazardous waste. Item G, intend to link to the 2013 county management records and retention disposition schedule updated by the government record section in Raleigh, acceptance of the 2013 schedule replaced the 2009 schedule, Commissioner Carter. Item H, due to recent changes in county manager's office, commissioner has not been reviewing prioritizing the goals from the April thirtieth meeting tonight, just as we're going to do later in the meeting. What I have asked, due to the events that occurred this week, and workload is to put it on our clerk, I asked her if she would just send this, set that aside for one meeting, email you with the connotation of all of that information, and then we'll put it on our meeting, our next meeting, and what we'll do is look at those things that we can do in the short term, long term, those things that we actually need to, the term that Commissioner Hudson put, I always, being, us pretty being military, but boots on the ground, we're going to put money on the ground to make it happen. Is that a good way of saying it?
Some of them are going to have to put money on the ground.
So, that is the consent agenda at this time, would you like to have any, before we approve it, any additions, additions, or other information concerning the consent agenda? Here none, I'd like to have a motion to the consent agenda be approved.
I'll make a motion to approve it. So, have any other additions?
I'll say nothing.
Now, the discussion, all in favor, please raise your hand. Want to take away from our next item, which is special recognition, because I'm going to turn that over to our vice chair, Mr. Jason Pauls, for the special recognition.
We're honored to do this again this year, we've got a group of citizens in our county that, they're Cleveland County Concerned Bikers Association, and they're here to raise awareness for safety for bikers, and I'll read this real quick, and then we'll ask if there's a group here today of our friends, if you'd like to come up. Says, "Certificated recognition from the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners presented to Cleveland County Concerned Bikers Association for promoting motorcycle awareness in Cleveland County, for encouraging all road users to look around, check mirrors, and consciously look for motorcycles. Cleveland County Commissioners support motorcycle awareness month in Cleveland County and commended for your dedication to this issue, presented this seventh day of May 2013," and signed by all commissioners. And if we can, we'd like to, maybe step down and present this to the group, and if y'all want to come up, and I want to get a picture. Commissioners, if you have any comments?
I want to thank you all, because I see you in community a lot, especially with our youth, our young folks that are getting out on motorcycles, I see you out doing our events that are out at the city park, and talking to those kids that are out getting on motorcycles and driving like crazy, and teaching them the experiences that they need to know on motorcycles, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. I'd like to hear if you'd all go to the mic, like, Mr. Pauls, if you'd like y'all to come on speaker, if you'd like to.
I'm just about to say that we're, our main agenda is to get motorists on the road to let life save a lot. We're out there in all kinds of weather, unfortunately, it's been raining, but we found out this time, we can, but we'd love you to just, you know, maybe put yourself on a masher, when you get a moment off of the road, and just help us get it on, I mean, we're husbands, fathers, brothers, and everything else, so just kind of look out for us.
I'd say too, one thing that a lot of people don't know about the CBA that's down here in Cleveland County, they're, they are very active in community, they do much more than just ride bikes and have a good time, and they do that, but they also go out to our schools, they teach motorcycle safety at schools, that's a free thing they do, they have motorcycle safety course that they do at their meetings as well, and they invite the public out to that. They also raise money for a lot of good causes. These men and women, they have raised a ton of money for the, especially for youth in our county, so it's a great neighbors to have, so thank y'all for coming.
Commissioners, our thanks to Jim and Adam is zoning map amendment residential for agricultural petition or permanent, and very close heart, Commissioner Carter.
The petition that you have for you tonight is to amend zoning map from residential to rural agricultural. The area is approximately nineteen point three acres, and it's located on Ross Road, off of Stony Point Road. We have recommendations from the planning board and Ice Thistle Planning Commission, both indicated that they would recommend that you approve the amendment. The planning consultant indicated that uses in the vicinity are a mix of single-family residential and vacant land, all of which are residential residential. The area surrounding the intersection of Ross Road and Stony Point is a mix of residential, commercial, and institutional uses currently. Subject of property contains a garage and storage buildings adjacent to Ross Road near the dead end. Given size of the property, he does not think that that would constitute spot zoning, and considering the low density of the area, residential agricultural designation would be acceptable, and would be in conformance with the land use plan. The planning board echoed those comments, also saying that it would be consistent with the land use plan, and they also felt like the amendment would be reasonable in the best interest of the public, particularly one of their findings that they have to make and recommend in their recommendation to you, saying that this was a large tract of land in close proximity to other properties on rural agricultural, which is north of there is our lower, or a district. Be glad to answer any questions, and producer, if you have any questions.
Commissioners, any questions, Commissioner Carter? Here none, at this time, the pair of public here in open, anyone in the audience who would like to speak for or against the land use plan change, please come up to the line, state your name and address, and the commission will know how you feel about it. Anyone who, anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come up to the line this time. Here none, the pair of public here in close, commissioners, any questions or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, who's the king, would do it with the same, with the planning board.
A motion, Commissioner Hudson, that the planning board change be approved? That's it. Over with, any further discussion? Here none, on favor, please raise your hand. And now we go to our regular gen, and it looks like Mr. Carter is going to take over our meeting. If you just want to make a sound, we'll go back to it.
The next item is an amendment to our land use plan, and you don't see these very often, but we have a referential, a request from James Canine in the Upper Part of the county to create what we call a commercial node, and that's a grid dots on our land use map, and they're typically found in intersections of major roads, and this particular intersection is St. Paul's Church Road and Wollington Road. It's about halfway in between Cajun and Bellwood, the intersection is primarily mixed uses, scrap metal business, truck repair shop, vacant garage, and of course residential rural type uses. Mr. Canine has some plans for growing this particular area, and would like to see this commercial area develop over the future, and in order for him to do that, it of course needs your blessing to amend the land use plan, and that will allow for future developments in that area also as commercial. But first, we have to take this initial step to make the area conditional, or commercial area on our land use plan.
Commissioners, you have Mr. Carter's, for the page, about 2015 land use plan amount amendment, this time, do you have any questions to Mr. Carter?
The question is a comment, you know, trying to create more business and violence and being friendly, I think that the, this objective, that we do the approval of it, that shows the public that we're, you know, working for, looking to getting areas available where they can expand, that can create businesses on the grown area.
I agree, Senator Martin, I mean, it's great that someone's looking at expanding business in area, it seems kind of a unusual place to put it, I mean, not on a main road, how would that affect the neighbors, the neighborhood there?
Well, of course, you know, there could be a variety of commercial uses that could be added to the area, this basically would, would help with the businesses that are already there, if those, if you wanted to raise on those properties, to make those properties conforming to our ordinance, allow those existing divisions to expand, and that would, this would also help that, but really no effect that I can see on the existing residential development, but just changing the land use plan. And we would rather see changes to the land use plan come from above the roof, and something in staffed the roof, and there, the people that live in these areas know more appropriately what alley model areas to develop, rather than us applying something to them if they lay around on the roof.
Just inside the event, doctors, or any, any opposition, or anybody that's not, we're alert.
Any other questions, commissioners? At this time, are any of our motions are approved or denied?
I'll make a motion that be approved.
Questions, Commissioner Hudson?
I'll say it.
Not shared, any discussion, all in favor of 2015 land use plan amount amendment, please raise your hand. Still, them having code violation, I live there.
Got several of those, where did I?
You just stand up there, we're good.
The first one on the list is eighteen oh five Isaac Place, and this is in the light up area. Property owner is Alan Sarr, and is now been placed into a LLC. My god, Alan Sarr was the property owner when we first began communicating with him, and Andrew may remember that name. We have, we held a hearing in July, and certain ended up, never could contact the property owner by mail, but ended up running legal ad to satisfy the notice requirements in the Gaston paper, lives in Gaston, Kansas. And still no action through the end of two thousand and twelve, and the order actually expired in April of this year, still no action, and now we're bringing it to you to allow us to demolish the old cleanup property.
If there's no question, I'll make a motion, we proceed with the order.
I'll say it. Got somebody, Commissioner Hudson, and second, Commissioner Holbrook to adopt the ordinance for, they don't have the, or he can go by the place, any other discussion? Here none, on favor, please raise your hand. Thank you very much, Mr. Carter.
Next one is Saint Neighborhood, this one's three sixty Oaks Drive, same property owner, Alan Sarr. We began looking at this property back in two thousand and eight, but it's, nothing has ever changed about the property. We began the actual process, notifications, and hearings, and orders in two thousand and twelve, here, actually, did have to run an ad on this one, he signed for the order on this one, acknowledging that he was aware of the situation. And we did run a legal ad in Gaston Paper for the order, who would sign for it, and inspected again in April, no change, and now we're coming to you in May to ask for authorization to demolish.
Again, the commissioners, officials, you said them having code violation, this time, please raise your hand.
I'd like to mention that we, that we're processing.
Got a motion from Commissioner Allen?
I'll say it.
Hold on, just a quick question for verification, but the demolition call, you apply a lien to the property, so?
We can, what we've been doing in the past is the tax collector sends a bill, and it gets paid that way.
If they don't pay it?
Yeah, lien is filed then, if that's paid, but we try to do it through, that, that set off process.
Okay, one, another question, were these big candidates were maybe a, a package burn for the, our clients?
Then that's, so usually gets these in this particular neighborhood, because they, they do make good properties for that, structurally, if we don't find that business.
Have a motion, Commissioner Allen, say, with Commissioner Holbrook to adopt the ordinance to demolish, three sixty seventh drive, any questions? Here none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, Mr. Carter, minimum code violation, I don't mispronounce it, one oh seven, is it Schink? Shane? Shane Farm Road.
Hearing was held on this one in October eleventh, two thousand and twelve, and an order served, after that, to demolish the home. No action's been taken by the property owner, property owners Larry Wilson and Rita Miller. And as you can tell, it's all grown up around it, it's been many, many years, it's actually partially burned, but you can't tell it from the picture, and the, these folks actually inherited the property, and just don't have any funds to really take care of that particular situation. The neighbors that live all around it are complaining and scared the kids will get hurt, so that's where the petition comes from. So we're asking you for permission to demolish this one.
Questions, Mr. Carter? Here none, do I have a motion to, 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 to,[1746.02]
And just have, property owners have not taken any action to try to remove the home and get the property cleaned up.
Questions, Mr. Carter?
You know, their intent is with the home.
It's not repairable, so it's just a matter of getting it removed off of that site. There are some other rental homes on that tract of land, so I would imagine they would put another unit back and rent it out if they could get that removed.
You should, motion to approve or deny the ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve the order.
Mr. Hudson?
Can I say that?
Mr. Allen, any other questions? Here now, all in favor of the ordinance to demolish 215, Regent Patterson Road, please raise your right hand. Mr. Carter? Seven twenty, Regent Island Home Street.
And back to light it. This one is owned by Edwin and Pamela Harold. Bill Inspector had some contact with Mr. Harold back this week, and he is interested in having fire department burn this one down so we can, we can help him with that. And hopefully that'll be for no cost to either of us.
Questions, Mr. Carter, about this?
I guess my question is, if he's not ready to burn it down, would he proceed with the order if he was to sit there and burn it down? I think, well, the order would give us the ability to do it later only in case he changes his mind. But that's it, I'll make a motion.
Got a question, Mr. Hudson?
Second.
Hold up. You have a question, Mr. Carter? I did have a vote on the adoption of order for 38900, please raise your right hand. Mr. Carter? I'll go with my, my second.
One more. Nally Drive, burned double wide. Property owner is Lynn Bridges Powell. And that's been standing vacant for quite a while. Some neighbors are starting to complain about that. We've held hearings, inserted the orders, and she hasn't been served with the notice. And she's just not able to get to work on it. So we're asking you to allow us to...
Questions, Mr. Carter?
I guess my question is, when you say that you can't afford to do it, and we do it, it's something that, either available, or not available? That's what I'm going for. You just know you can do it. It'll pay you away, yeah. No, okay.
Any questions, Mr. Carter? May I have a motion to give a request?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Any other questions, Mr. Hudson?
I'll say.
Mr. Allen, any other discussion, questions?
One more question. On a, whatever, on a home like this, looks like a double wide, there's got to be some salvage, some scrap metal in there. Does that offset her expense?
It does. Our bill form actually has that calculation on there. They have to tell us the scrap value and the demolition cost and subtract out the scrap value from that demolition cost and that's the amount we use to compare to bills.
So, all in favor, all in favor? Mr. Carter, I believe I want to let you sit. Alan, first thing is, discussion of the interim county manager. Fishers, are you aware of the situation in the place that took up the town? The county is very fortunate that one of our, one of our own engineers up here at the county could continue to work for us in the economic development arena. A person who is well respected, who, an individual who we have talked with and has agreed to come back to serve as I am, if you so choose, has agreed to do so for short term. This gentleman has the respect not only of the county, he has respect of all the department heads who basically have served for him. He actually still has his, we still have, whether, our chief financial officer who worked under Mr. Dear, David Dear. And at this time, I'm actually entering his name into the record as a request to this board that Mr. David Dear be appointed interim county manager, operating.
I'll second, I'll second that comment that, that we need to follow, Dr. Davis. We do it and by the next meeting, then we can work out the details of how it will be set up and how he operates and, this is the details of what actually...
Those have to work for us. But the expertise in that area would be very much valuable to us. So at this time, if there were other names to be entered into this, I would like to entertain a motion that David Dear be named the interim county manager until such time as we can appoint a manager. I thought you made a motion, I'm sorry.
I thought you made a motion, I second, didn't you?
Yes, I did, this is my fault, I apologize. I made a motion, Christian Hudson seconded. Now, discussion. I know that Mr. Paul, Mr. Holdup, Mr. Allen have not worked with David that much, but he is an individual of, of great talent. He is an individual that is well respected in this county and I personally appreciate voting and supporting him to be interim manager. At this time, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, please raise your right hand. You, just know, if you were to form Mr. Dear's, he'd work. Does that mean I get fired?
Not until he says so.
All right, our next discussion is actually the advertisement for the county manager position. What I would like with your commission is that we name Commissioner Susan Allen, our county clerk, and David Dear, our interim manager, to not only advertise, receive the resumes, and also, also keep us informed of all that's going on. I think that with Susan's expertise in business, our county clerk's experience, and David Dear's knowledge of all those who may apply completely, in North Carolina, that we will allow that team to look at all the resumes that come in and use every avenue that we have to advertise. Again, before permission, I'd like to put that in form of a motion.
I'll say.
That's excellent, Mr. Carter.
I've got some questions because my opinion on what a county could be may entirely differ from them. And I think since he's going to be hired by the majority of us, I think all the applications should be available. I have no problems with him going out there with the advertisement, but I personally would like to review each resume that comes in because I have, for example, I've got as much business experience probably as anyone sent up here.
I understand that, Mr. Allen.
I, I first would like to be involved in myself.
Just a question. My interpretation is that those three would end it up, but the applications, the resumes when they came in would be over for any, any review, is that correct?
It's not going to be any exceptions, it's just going to be, they're going to compile them and give us this message.
Yeah, but we need, we need to determine what are we looking for in the county commission before we go advertise.
Don't, just for, just for example, we've got to have a resume and look at it and...
Yeah, but, but again, you know, like I say, even when we hired our last one, David, we put out specifics that we wanted there. Need to want them applied because, you know, you know, if we want one that's young, if we want one that's ready to retire, just like you said, or if we want one that's strong in economic development, if we want one that's strong in finance, if we want one that's strong in HR, if it's something we want to advertise for county manager, I think there needs to be some criteria set so we know what we're going to get and what we're looking for.
Just like me and you and Honest, I would say that resumes would speak, speak to all those issues and...
Well, I just figured that, you know, if you got some criteria out there, why take a bunch of resumes when you know you're not going to accept them?
I think one thing that we've got, that we can kind of call back on a little bit is, we went through this process two years ago. And we had a, I think we all had a chance to review the advertisement that we put in before, and it was something that was a standard advertisement. I believe getting the widest, widest range of applicants possible to apply, we might be thinking one thing and then have somebody send a resume that maybe is a little bit outside the box that we're thinking of, that may just blow our socks off and be the right person for the job. So, but I agree that once we get those resumes in hand and we get those applications in hand, each commission needs to have the opportunity to review those. And I think this, you know, rather than having all of us on that team working on submitting the, the announcements and things like that, I think having three or four, I don't know, four or five, somebody else on that as well.
One of the things, Johnny, is first, as collective as a group, determine what the criteria is that we'd be looking for and put that information out. And I think what Ronnie's saying is that when we put it out, the information that we ought to determine as a group, and then we gather the information in, and then we collectively as a group...
But as far as, as far as the process getting started, I'm opposed to, no offense, but I, 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 Johnny's community office, Mr. Hudson's team, and if he wants to be part of that group?
I have no problem with that. So, I change my motion to, Mr. Allen has the log of that being a business, our county clerk, our interim manager, and Christian Hudson's being the group that actually moved out and used all applications to attract county manager, review those applications in specific risk. I have a second.
I'll say.
Second, Mr. Holdup. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Let's see, a lot of works ahead, aren't we? Last, Jim Island is one I assume to be added. We received a letter from Hoyt Bailey, who is chairman of trustee board at Cleveland County College. In the letter, it stated, each one of you have received, talked to that letter, that Ray Milton was being considered for a full term on the trustee board. From my time that I've served with him, since he replaced Mr. Paul, who designed, called the work in movement, he has become a valuable and a part of trustee board. He's actually now the chairman of the property grounds of the community college. And I would like to ask this board if they would consider him to be appointed for a full term.
Chairman, I'll make, I'll do that. I think being creative, city, you know, some of those meetings, it takes a person probably nine months to a year to really get activated, to be a valuable participant on that board. And also that board is entertained, you know, trying to become a little bit younger in the new board members. There've been a lot of very good board members that are getting on up in years. And I think Mr. Milton, in the short time that he's been a member of that board, has certainly received exceptional reviews for a lot of the board members about his willingness to participate and do his own work and be a valuable board member.
I'm going to have a motion, Jeff.
I'll make a motion that we accept all recommendations.
Motion, Mr. Hudson? Second, Mr. Holdup, any other discussion? Here now, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Matt Clark, would you inform Bailey of the appointment of Ray Milton for a full term on the trustee board at Cleveland County College? Thanks. Commissioner's report. Ray Milton, aren't you? Commissioner's report, Bill Carter, you won't be in. Ms. Milton, Mr. Carter, you? I'm here. Susan?
Just briefly, we've had two or three nice economic development projects coming into the county in initial inquiries, and not gone through certain steps yet. The initial inquiries and visits have been very good. So, we still have some movement of the economic development, the elevation to tier two has affected us in discussion with those people, but things are still moving in a positive way. Kristin's done a pretty good, I think, exceptional job. And one thing that we all have to be concerned about is four billion of the bank is doing that office also. We did more, you know, generally she does, building job. There's Charlotte Regional Partnership launching this Thursday, and also, I'm sorry, the 16th, which is Thursday, this Thursday, close to current practice in L C A, sponsors which we held at the grand.
Just a question, you said we got a debate with Bill on economic development, I don't see how they think that's...
I just, it's an accident, we need to remember it.
Yes, we need to work to do that. Bill and I attended the last RPO, MPO meeting we got a ton of last week. Looked like the number of the boards called is not, it'd be like it ought. I mean, it's going to be pretty comfortable if you stay with the MPOs, the RPOs. I think one of the major questions is the voting system, MPOs, the three county MPO, how that's going to stand. From what I understand, the recommendation is going to be by population. So by population, each one of the counties, basically, I don't know, with Alamo, we have County Alamo, Lake and Alamo, we have Alamo. So the voting position would be more intact, closer than what it would be with the structure they got. So they're going to send it to their...
A P C? We meet tomorrow.
They meet tomorrow.
We'll forward a recommendation.
Yes, they will do the recommendation and whatever they choose to do, they choose not to go with the three county deal, we stay with the RPO. If they choose to go with it, then we can, we can live to go with it. So, actually, actually, we probably need some guidance tonight because they did ask for that. In the event that everything is, comes out that we want to go with three cannibals, with the cannibals.
I would ask, to refer to yours and Bill taking the case, I would ask Commissioner to give you the bill to the board to make that decision. If I could get a second. Second, Mr. Holdup. Any questions about Mr. Hudson, Mr. Carter making a decision on our membership, if that's okay, if they want it, please raise your right hand.
I think it, I think it's going to be a big plus because, you know, we've got everything to do this well, it's going to be easier for the D O P to do it, and it's going to be more compact, so it actually depends on what the rest of the county does tomorrow.
We'll, we'll come back in front of you with any of you memorandum of understanding that all jurisdictional signs to actually formally create that need, I mean, each jurisdiction that's signed, and we'll bring that in front of you.
Chairman, I just think we should have the board go home, record it, say, thank you to Mr. Mr. Hudson, we've done, we've done...
Well, Bill, Bill, Bill's been there with me in a late, can't imagine work for us for this time, and it hasn't been ages time, but we got through it.
So, basically, from this board, we probably thank you and Bill and your work, and we look forward to the paperwork. Sure. I'll share.
Well, along that same, those same lines, I'd like to say thank you too. One of mine concerns, the whole ordeal that y'all are dealing with, was wanting to keep our county public, and keep us all together, and this is the only way that that could have happened. And y'all, y'all spent a lot of time and hard effort, and I really appreciate, I got to visit with them, one of their meetings and see them work, working, and they did a good job for us. It's been a busy couple weeks. Along with the commissioners, went to the Nurse Family Partnership Community Celebration. That was a great event. Family Partnership Community Celebration, uh, that was a great event, uh, we got to celebrate, uh, some really good things going on in our county, uh, JCPC meeting, uh, earlier today, uh, was very insightful as far as what we've got our community partners doing to work with young people and juvenile crimes, so, um, it's been a very busy week. Also, one of, one other, just quick note, um, I'm, I'm sure you'll have as well, after the store put out something for our goals, that we were, uh, we looked at our goal workshop, uh, goal city workshop, um, I got a lot of phone calls, um, agreeing with a lot of the things that were said at that meeting, and shows how to touch, uh, along our, with, with our communities, so, um, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Just kind of overview, uh, we asked county clerk if she would compile the, uh, goals that we said at the work session, email them to commissioners, uh, think about which one you'd like to come up with for you, we'll write back to you next meeting, whether it's short term or long term, uh, then we can have some discussion whether it's one of those goals be funded, and how we would go about that, uh, and just get started in discussion with your permission, I would also like, uh, Ms. Melton to, uh, notify, uh, Mr. Dear that we have approved him as interim, uh, and I guess we're having to have to be on the set with that, but if you're to notify Mr. Dear, uh, really, really thankful for him stepping up to the plate, um, he was a great manager, uh, he served the county as a financial officer and manager, but all the people he worked with are still in place, so I think you'll be fine, but there'll be a real smooth transition, uh, I look forward to the work of Mr. Hudson, Ms. Allen, Kerry, and David, in getting this out into the correct application, so that we can get a quick response and quick resolution to the management position, and, uh, had something else to say, other than I think it's really what I want to say is, thank you Kerry, thank you April for keeping me in line for a week, and, uh, honored to thank you for you being here, I call it, I call it Bob Junior now, and, uh, but, uh, thank all of you, thank you for all the work that's all done, and if I could have a moment to do, Dan, John.
Thank you, Mr. John.
A moment, listen to a turn, I share, anybody don't want to, please raise your hand.